All county offices will be closed Monday, May 29th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings! As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology friendly reminder.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Did you know the County of El Paso has a YouTube channel? Go to youtube.com and search "The County of El Paso, Texas." There, you will find videos highlighting some of the departments within the county. Don't forget to like our videos and subscribe to the channel.
Here's an information technology friendly reminder on how to protect your mobile devices. Make sure the OS and software are up to date at all times. Download apps from reputable sites and closely review permission requests. Use a strong, complex password. Turn off Bluetooth and other connections when not in use. Please don't download apps from third-party app stores and sites, and please don't leave your mobile device unattended in public places.
Judge Juarez Barril, who's here today, to where it is today, Judge Anchondo, and for all of the staff and the team members, everyone who participates in helping make this such a successful court. This is the second year in a row for this distinction, and what you have done and your staff and your team, Judge Anchondo, is bring incredible honor and prestige to our community. It's not just the work that you do in the courthouse, or the impact that you've had on so many lives, but that we can serve as a model for justice and hope for others and other communities. It's pretty remarkable. Thank you for that. I'd like to ask Maggie Morales Aina to please join us at the podium, and I'll turn it over to you. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Escobar, Commissioner Leon, and Commissioner Hagerty. First of all, thank you very much for allowing us to host this in at Commissioner's Court. It is a very important event, and as you can see, we have a long list of speakers that want to say great things about this court and what it's done for this community. I'd like to recognize some of our stakeholders, supporters, and distinguished guests that we have here. We have Assistant Chief Maloney and Humberto Talamantes from the Police Department, Commander Robert Flores, and Marcos Vargas. We also have Marge Fernandez-Prou, the Director of the Justice Programs. We have District Attorney Jaime Esparsa. We have Judge Gamboa from the Probate Court, Judge Thomas Beasley, Judge Alma Trejo, who's our presiding judge and will be our keynote speaker. We have Judge Carlos Carrasco, Judge Jesús Herrera, Judge Alejandro Gonzales, Judge Angie Burrell, Judge Anna Perez, Judge Penny Hamilton. We also have Judge Curris. We have Judge Curita. We have Judge Alejandro...Alex Gonzales from Del Rio. Sergio Gonzales. Sergio Gonzales, from Del Rio, Texas. We have Judge Maria Salas Mendoza. We have Otis Martin from the U.S. Probation Department. We have Ivan Tapia, CEO of Aliviane. We have Jessica Gonzalez from Congressman O'Rourke's office. We also have Amy Lechuga from the Court Administration. We also have Judge Yara Gutierrez from the Family Court, Judge Joe Gonzalez from the Protective Order Court. And if I missed anybody, I apologize. We're still working on everybody who showed up. So I wanted to welcome everybody and to introduce our keynote speaker, which is Presiding Administrative Judge, Judge Alma Trejo of County Criminal Court at Law Number One.
Thank you, Maggie. And Judge, please feel free to address the audience. We may need to turn on that mic if you'll give us just a sec. Thank you.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me? For those of you that know me, you know this is going to be a very short speech. It gives me great pleasure to congratulate my friend and my colleague for this recognition and for all the hard work that he and his entire team place into this program in order to restore lives and protect public safety. As courts, we are always concerned for the welfare of our community and are elated when individuals do not return to the criminal justice system. That being said, this recognition did not come easy. After a rigorous application process among 700 DWI courts in this country, this court was selected as one of the three academy courts. When this program received this recognition three years ago, we were very happy. But now that this recognition has been bestowed for another three years, we compliment the efforts that this team has performed. This program will serve as a model and provide educational and training services for other courts throughout the country. Additionally, the academy courts will serve as a research platform for the development, identification, and testing of DWI court practices. We are very proud as a community to be able to have this program to help those afflicted with addiction, and which serves as a useful approach for rehabilitation for drivers when traditional countermeasure measures have not been effective. And just to give you a couple of stats about the DWI court has graduated about 400 participants since their inception, and out of those, only 30 have reoffended. So I think those are outstanding numbers, and I guess if we have to go percentage-wise, they have a 93% success rate. And lastly, we applaud the efforts of these programs, and we are completely in support of this program, and we are very proud to have the DWI court in our community. And just as a side note, Judge Anchondo's court was actually one of the first courts. He is actually a pioneer. I know that's not in the speech, and I'm going off the speech, Judge Anchondo. But he was...he has been a pioneer. We're very lucky to have him and his team here in our community, and I'm very lucky to have him not only as a friend, but as my neighbor. He's my neighbor, not out there, but here. I know that I can count on him, and he can count on me. And once again, congratulations to the DWI court team.
Thank you, Judge Trejo. Our next speaker is United States District Judge David C. Juarez-Rama from the United States District Court of Western District of Texas.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to join with all of you to celebrate and honor our good friend and colleague Judge Anchondo. I kidded with Judge Trejo before we started that we both wrote out the words we were going to say because we wanted to keep it short. The last thing you want to do is offer a lawyer an open mic and ask him to speak a few words. And I'm going to violate my cardinal rule as well because I have something to say that is not in my speech, and that is, when the drug court movement first started in this community, it was tenuous. I mean, it wasn't a for-sure deal. It was questionable. It was politically not all that on solid ground. And I want to thank Commissioner Leon, who was then Chief Leon, for his fantastic support of our beginning and fledging drug court program back then. Had it not been for his support and the support of Sheriff Leo Salmaniego, the drug court movement may not very well have started in this community. So I thank him for that, and I apologize for being off-script. Okay, here we go. Having served this community for 24 years, and for 24 years having the support of this county, every time I walk through the front doors of this building, it feels like I'm coming home. And there's probably not a greater sentiment in life than the sense of coming home. And what a greater homecoming than to be able to be here today to celebrate the huge success likened by some to back-to-back Super Bowls of one of our very own and his recognition by the National Center of DWI Courts. Judge Anchondo's hard work and accomplishments have long been a source of great pride for our community, and they are so today. And for those of us involved in the specialty courts, it's a particularly especially proudful day for his success. As you all know, Judge Anchondo's participation in his beloved DWI court is exactly that, a labor of love. He...it's an absolutely voluntary effort on his part. He's not required by the terms of the office to which he was elected to have a DWI court. He has a DWI court because he was passionate about getting a DWI court. And that passion, I guarantee you, began on day one. Because on day one, very early in the morning, Judge Anchondo's in my chambers. He had covered my drug court the night before, and he comes in in typical Robert Anchondo style. Big arm movements, loud voice, very animated, telling me that covering my drug court was one of the best things he had ever done as a judge, and he had to have himself one. And he was going to get himself a drug court, a DWI court, some kind of specialty court. And he was going to get himself a drug court, a DWI court, some kind of specialty court. So when Judge Anchondo left my office that day, I knew he was going to have a DWI court. But what I didn't know was that it was going to be one of the best in the nation. Those of you that know Judge Anchondo well, aren't surprised by this fact because you know, he's not the kind of guy that just simply does his job. Because he's passionate and tenacious in his pursuit of excellence in everything that he does. And it was that drive for excellence that demanded within him that he have a DWI court. So on behalf of all of us, I thank you Judge Anchondo for your tenacity, for your pursuit of excellence and forgiving of yourself to the DWI drug court movement so that others less fortunate than you could have their homecoming. So they could have that feeling unrivaled by any other of coming home, of coming home from the pain of addiction to the peace of sobriety. So it is with joyous and pride-filled heart that I congratulate you and your staff on receiving today's award and this recognition for a job well done. In conclusion Judge, I sum up all of this morning's morning ceremony in three words. These three words represent the Barrio's proudest boast and I turn for these three words to the venerable vernacular of El Paso Thomas Jefferson Silver Foxes.
Thank you very much for that wonderful speech Judge Guadalupe. Our next speaker comes from the Office of Court Administration and she's a Specialty Court Program Manager, Anissa Johnson. This is the first time we meet face to face, but we've had a long relationship for years over the phone.
Good morning, everyone. I have no idea how I got put behind these two judges here, but I'm glad to see you were reading your speeches. I'm going to read mine as well. First, it really is an immense pleasure to be here today celebrating the El Paso DWI Drug Court. I bring you greetings and congratulations on behalf of the Office of Court Administration. And for those of you who don't know what OCA is, we're a state agency that operate under the Supreme Court of Texas and the Chief Justice. As Maggie said, I'm not here just as my role as a specialty courts program manager. I'm also here as a friend of Judge Anchondo and Letitia and Maggie. And I'm very nervous, so just bear with me. In 2011, I worked with the Governor's Criminal Justice Division and I was the program manager for the grant program. And that is how I got to know Judge Anchondo and Letitia and Maggie. And I look to them often for guidance on DWI related matters because they are the experts in that field. One notable distinction of this court team, as you all know, is continuing education and training. Whenever I attend a training, I see Judge Anchondo or his staff either in attendance or presenting because of their expertise in this area. Their commitment to education and training has resulted in this court being recognized not once but twice as a national academy court and I'm so proud of them and commend them for all their accomplishments. For the past 12 years, from being the first of its kind in the state and in El Paso. So I commend you and applaud you as an academy court from which courts from across not just the nation, but the world can come to learn from you on how to operate a successful DWI drug court program. And what better time to do this than National Drug Court Month? So I applaud you. I'm very happy to be here and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Anissa. Our next speakers are going to be two participants that were selected and their past graduates and they're going to give you their testimony. Our first one is Jose Montoya.
I feel truly honored to be here today to celebrate with this amazing team. I know that when I was incarcerated, I remember getting on my knees and praying for help. I remember asking God, please show me which direction to go. Because at the moment, I was facing several years in prison. My children were taken away by CPS and of course, because of my actions, practically lost everything. And I felt that piece in my heart that that help was going to come. So sometime went by because even, you know, my family as well as my attorney said, you know, I think it's better to stay here for a while because every time you come out, you bring me new cases. So just stay here and let's see what happens. So when the time came and he mentioned to me about this program, of course, I felt the joy of freedom. To be honest with you, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. It was like, where do I sign and you know, I'm free, right? Ready to get started. But when I started the program and I started to see what it was all about, it took me a while to understand. It took me a while that this was going to be a process. I didn't really accept many times that why is all this people getting involved in my life? You know, the officers showing up in the middle of the night. There was a point where my neighbors said, hey, Joe, are you with the police or something? Because I see cops coming visit you. I said, no, they're here for me. It's like, wow. It was one of those things like, what happened, Joe? I thought you're a good guy. I said, oh, let me tell you a little. So anyways, it was, to me, a challenge, but at the same time, I was receiving the help that I needed. So as I continued to receive this help, I remember that both CPS and Drug Court were working together to give me a lot of this help that I needed. I remember that I had a few sanctions and one of the last, practically the last time that had sanctioned, I remember that Judge Anchondo called me to his office and I was very nervous. I remember they had to bring me in and I was like, oh man, I wonder what's going to happen, right? And so he told me if it's something that I really wanted to do because he was not going to give up on me. And if it wasn't what I wanted, if it wasn't my desire, well practically to, you know, do my time. And it really, it really hit in my heart that he still believed in me after me, you know, stumbling through the process. So they did send me to treatment with Aliviane where I received. I remember that being one of those times where everything clicked, you know, it's like a light bulb turned on and thanks to the counseling and all the work that all this team put together for me, it really made an impact in my life. It is, there's so much gratitude in my heart. After two years, after graduating back in 2013, I was able to get full custody of my children. I was able to, in that process, I also met the love of my life, Diana, which is here with me today. I was able to continue in this journey where I have the opportunity to give back to those in recovery. And I still come to visit Drug Court, hopefully not imposing too much. I come and see what I can do once in a while and it's truly to me inspiring to see that these programs are receiving the recognition that they deserve. How proud I feel that it's happening here in El Paso. I was born and raised in Chihuahua. I never expected to find recovery here in El Paso, but I did. And it's thanks to this wonderful folks that put all that effort to find solutions. I'm very, very happy for this recognition, Your Honor, and the rest of the team. And I thank you for having me here today to share part of my story because if I share it all, then I'm going to have you all here all day. So just a little bit. Thank you so much for having me here. I'm Jose and I'm a recovering addict.
Thank you Jose. In between, we're going to have two representatives from Congressman O'Rourke's office to say. Come on in. You were already up.
Thank you, thank you. And good morning, everybody. And good morning, Commissioners Court and Judge Escobar. Thank you so much for having us today. I feel a little awkward giving you my back, but good morning. So I'm here, I'm Richard Settles and I'm from Congressman O'Rourke's office as we were introduced. I'm here with my colleague, Ms. Jessica Gonzalez-Evans and we're here to present a certificate of special congressional recognition. But before I do that, of course, I want to give congratulations to Judge Anchondo and his amazing team. And I think it speaks volumes by the amazing turnout that is here this morning. Actions always speak louder than words and for all these people to take time out of their day to be here to congratulate you definitely says more than I can certainly say this morning. So really, congratulations to your team as well. So again, if I can, if I can please have you come up to, so we can present it. So the certificate reads, certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Judge Robert S. Anchondo on the occasion of his DWI drug court being selected as an academy court. Wednesday, May 3, 2017. Signed, Beth O'Rourke, Member of Congress.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
I feel 411.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Court. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jessica had gotten up so Mr. Montoya could go in, so I figured I'm not going to make her get up again. So thank you Jessica. Thank you, Richard. Our next speaker is one, another testimony from Vicente Santaya. Santaya.
Montoya because his testimony and speech when I was at Aliviane was like three days into my drug court stint was one of the speeches that kind of clicked with me because our stories were so similar. I got my first DWI July 24, 2015, a week shy of my daughter's second birthday, three weeks after my 28th. And I thought it was a joke. My attorney told me, you know what, you're going to be okay. My bondsman told me, you're going to be okay. This is probably going to get dismissed. So I strutted into court and I was my confident self. October 8, 2015, I crashed my car and didn't pick up a second DWI. So my thought process was, you know, I went 28 years, got one, I can go another 28 years before I get a second. On December 26, 2015, my life started to kind of come crumbling down. And I remember off of a binge and still drunk from the night before, I called my mom crying and said, I need to quit my job. I need to lock myself up in the house and I need to stop drinking. And she was shocked, but said, okay, we're going out of town, but lock yourself up in the house and don't go anywhere and stop drinking. So five days later was New Year's Eve and here I was like, oh, you know what, I haven't drank for five days. I can drink tonight and I'll be okay. And I wasn't. And at about 1:30 in the morning, I was doing 95, going down Mesa at a .17 blood alcohol level with cocaine in my pocket and ready to take over the city of El Paso once again. Thankfully, an officer pulled me over before I could kill anybody and took me to jail. So that morning in jail, I kind of got a moment of clarity and I was like, oh wow, yeah, that's what's, that's what happens. So let me stop. And about a month later, I went to court with Judge Alex Gonzalez and he threw me in jail again. And in court, and in court, I was sad and I was punching walls in the little holding cell in the back. And then when I was walking to court, I started strutting and I was like, I'm going to call my bondsman and I'll be out in four hours. And I was. Off a $75,000 bond, which thankfully I knew my bondsman and he helped me get out. But you know, I kind of started upsetting judges. And a week later, I saw the felony court judge and I upset that judge. And in the process, I said something very, very, very dumb about Judge Gonzalez and I upset him even more. So that night, I went to work and I wasn't supposed to be working in bars and I thought, you know what, it's work. It's okay. And they caught me and they threw me in jail for 10 days. And my attorney called me and said, look, I'm not going to let you take probation because you're not going to make it. The only other thing they're offering is drug court and you're not going to make it. So we're going to find out how much jail time they're going to give you and you're going to go with that. And at that point, I was like, you know what, this has all been very humbling. I've gotten everybody mad along the way. Let me try taking it back a notch and changing this. So I said, no, I'm going to do probation, regular probation. I'm not going to do drug court because that's crazy. So I'm going to do regular probation and I'm going to strut through this also. And then I went to court and Judge Gonzalez said, huh, you think you're going to, you think you're going to choose what's going to happen to you? No, I'm going to choose what's going to happen to you. And my mom was there in court. So while I was meeting with Ms. Medina and Ms. Anna and crying my eyes out because I really didn't know what was going on, Judge Gonzalez told my mom exactly what would happen to me if I didn't make it in drug court because I was going to go to jail and that I was too pretty for jail. He also, he also let my mom know that through his 15-year judgeship, he had only ever lost two, two people and that I wasn't going to be the third. And that resonated with me and that one hit me the most. And in that moment, I decided, no matter what, I was going to make it through this drug court. So everyone told me, no, you're crazy. You're not going to make it. My attorney told me, you're not going to make it. I'll see you in about a month and a half when we're doing all the proceedings for you to go to jail. And I said, no, that's not going to happen. I met everybody in the drug court. I met with Ms. Medina, Ms. Potts, Ms. Dominguez, Judge Anchondo, everybody else. I met the surveillance officers and I was like, man, this is a lot. Maybe he was right, but he wasn't. And here I am today. I finished drug court in 13 months, which is exactly what it takes. I had a few sanctions along the way, but thankfully, nothing serious. I didn't drink. I didn't do drugs. Judge Gonzalez, Judge Anchondo and his team, they saved my life because I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for this drug court. And for that, I thank you guys.
Our next speaker is going to present the award to Judge Anchondo and his team. And his name is Jim Eberspacher. I practiced it. It's German, so I was going to say Eberspacher, but he comes all the way from DC to do this presentation. So Mr.
Good morning, everyone. Quite the turnout. Very impressive judge. I just want to share a little bit about the academy court process, why we designate academy courts and then also talk about the judge and his team. You know, at NCDC, we hold our academy courts up in high regard and that's because they serve as our training ground for jurisdictions looking to implement a new program in their communities. And it's also for existing court programs, existing DWI courts to come and learn about evidence-based practices, the 10 guiding principles and look at a model court that exemplifies those practices. Or for innovative and Or for innovative and fresh ideas that might work in their communities, no matter where it is around the country or even worldwide. You know, therefore, the academy court process is a selection we don't take lightly. And I'm sure Judge Anshondo and his team know that, having gone through it twice now and being selected twice. The applicants are closely scrutinized through a desk review. And essentially, we tell them to give us everything that they have on paper, essentially, policies and procedure manuals, handbooks. We ask them a series of questions to answer in a narrative. And we have a peer review group of faculty from around the country that they dig deep into that application process and their materials to essentially try to shoot holes in, you know, in what they say that they're doing on paper. But it doesn't end there. So if you pass that level of scrutiny, then you get selected for a site review. And that's where two NCDC faculty, and in this case, it was myself and one of our project directors, Shane Wolf, came out. And we sit essentially kind of in a corner and observe. We observe their staffing. We observe court. We ask some questions just to make sure, again, what they put on paper is exactly what they're doing in practice. And, you know, what we look for in selecting our academy courts is if they meet evidence-based practices. Are they following the 10 guiding principles of DWI courts, which is the foundation of how DWI courts should operate? And they're built upon research and data over the course of, you know, 20 to 30 years of that research. So it's a proven practice, you know? And we also look for, what else are they doing, you know, in their community? What kinds of connections do they have with their community? You know, what kinds of people graduate the court? How are they doing afterwards? Are they not being seen again unless they're coming back in just for the sheer fun of coming to court for some reason? You know, but that says a lot about not only their court, but other courts around the country who pass that muster. In this go-around, we had approximately, I think it was 13, 14 applicants from around the country. Actually, some from Texas as well, including the El Paso court. We were only able, we only select four. So we make sure that those that we select are truly the four best applicants that we get. And in going through their application and their materials and watching them in practice, they checked a lot of our boxes, you know, that we look for. And as I mentioned, this is their second designation as an academy court. So they have to suffer with us for another three years of us coming and dragging scores of people from around the country to essentially scrutinize what they do on a yearly basis, sometimes more. And I was thinking about, when I was flying here yesterday, the first time I flew to El Paso, it was about three years ago, and it was for one of the trainings that we hold here. And I remember coming through Dallas, because everything comes through Dallas, it seems like, and thinking, and, you know, like, I've got another two-hour flight to get to El Paso. I'm like, this is a big state, right? And I remember flying in and coming in, and it looks a lot different from the air, right? From other parts of Texas. And thinking and hearing about, you know, across the border, don't go over there, you know, go over there, it's safe. We had people come in. Judge Anshondo invited, I think, the entire law enforcement community to come talk to our participants, our attendees, to say, it's safe. You're fine. You know, everything's good. But what it says about being out here so far, you know, still being a part of Texas, but being so far west, only city in this time zone, right? In the state of Texas? Yeah. Yeah, he says that a lot. You know, it says a lot about being on an island by yourself, essentially. You have to think, even though it's a large community, right? Large population-wise, you have to be innovative in the things that you do and approaches that you take to what is an epidemic and probably the biggest public safety issue faced in every community, and that's impaired driving. You know, and I remember sitting in court for the first time, watching Judge Anshondo and his team, and I'm like, if you've been there, I was like, what the heck's going on? You know, and I'd seen a number of treatment courts, DWI courts around the country. I'd been part of teams, and I had never seen anything like it. And here he is, and I'm sure if he's been in your offices, you know, begging for something or whatever the case may be. You know, he works a room like no one else. And he talks with his participants. He asks the families what's going on. You don't see that in other courtrooms around the country. We don't see that in a lot of other DWI courts around the country. But it also talks about the partnerships and how much his entire team cares about what they're doing. The fact that, you know, and I'm sure that team members will nod their heads, if he calls you at 3:00 in the morning, which you've all gotten those calls, I'm sure, you know, it's not because you're doing something wrong or because, you know, he's a micromanager or anything like that. He's always driving along with the team to make sure that they're on top of things and they're always improving, which is a large part of why they're designated as academy court again. That and the kinds of work that they're doing and the people that come out of their courts and highlight the work that they've done and go on to huge successes. And stories that the graduates here talked about isn't uncommon around the country. And that's fairly sad in terms of, you know, how they get to that point. It's a common story. But what's not all that common is what it is how much they change. They each have their unique individual opportunities, their own issues to work through. But that's what the team does so well, you know, is helping participants get through the program, you know, and hit milestones and achieve successes. So one of the cool things about this, and, you know, you can ask Jose back there afterwards, he's been invited to speak at our national conference in July. Yeah. So. This court doesn't rest on their laurels. They're always trying to improve. And it's hard to improve upon near perfection. They're not quite perfect. They still got a little work to do, but that's all right, right? You know, but we're very excited. We're very happy about the work that they're doing. And if you've ever seen anything that we put out at the National Center for DWI Courts, one of our taglines or one of our mottos is that DWI courts make communities safer. And this court does exactly that. So the work of that, this team, Judge Anshondo and the rest of his team, and all the partners that they have with resources and people, you know, helping guide the participants along the way in the recovery are important, and it makes this community safer. So Judge Anshondo, if you'd come up here. You know, it's with great pleasure. I'm afforded the opportunity to be here. It is National Drug Court Month, which, you know, couldn't be a better, you know, we couldn't have wrote it any better. You know, and it's my pleasure to recognize this team as an academy court. So let's read this real quick. "In recognition of outstanding service to the treatment court community, the El Paso DWI Drug Court is hereby named a DWI Academy Court by the NADCP, the National Center for DWI Courts, and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration."
Thank you very much. Y'all stand here.
Jim, thank you so much for coming such a long way. But it's always enjoyable to have you here because we take you to some of the best places we have here to eat, including Chico's Tacos. So let's give Jim a round of applause. Judges, thank you so much for taking the time to get away from your schedules. I do appreciate that. But what's even more appreciative is that you're here, you took time. I know you have a busy schedule, but it's because of the judiciary here that we're so successful. So my congratulations to you, Judge Gonzalez, for also taking the time from coming from your area to be here. So muchas gracias for that. Judge Guadama, viva la Jeff. Judge Escobar, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Hagerty. I remember Commissioner Leon. I came up to make a speech, and he says, oh, by the way, we got to recognize Judge Anshondo because he was nominated Outstanding X. So thank you for that recognition. I represent Jeff well today. Thank you so much. And thank you, Judge Guadama, for being the pioneer that you have been for starting this business of how we save lives. But you know what? When you look around here, what you have is a wealth of partners that have helped this program grow. You know, it was about 13 years ago that, in fact, me and Judge Gonzalez had this conversation in my office. He says, you know, I need to talk to you about this. What the hell is this business that you run, the specialty court? What's it all about? And why are you going to get Cadillac service? I said, well, Judge, you're part of it because you just saw one of your graduates here. And that's what it's all about. You know, to our other graduates who are here, may you please rise if I see you here. You know, it's because of these programs that the criminal justice system has gotten better because, as Jim said, it is National Drug Court Month. Even our own governor sent a proclamation statewide congratulating all the hard work that drug courts are doing, not only in this state, in this community, but around the country. So I thank all the specialty courts here and their team members. Let's give them a round of applause. You know, this recognition is fantastic. I'm excited for El Paso. You know, West Texas, mountains, standard time, as I always tell everybody. Mountains, desert, dirt, dry weather, 300 days of sunshine, a little windy. But I go brag about this city. He knows it. Maggie knows it. I mean, we were just in Wisconsin the other day. I was with the Norwegian culture. Green. It was raining. There was lakes. I had to take a moment and just take it in. I said, hijo, this feels great. Let me just take the awe of it. So I flew back, and I brought some rain. I brought some hail, so, you know, it worked. You know, I write a speech every time. And it's tough to follow a speech because it comes from the heart. But the recognition that we receive is not Judge Anshondo. Judge Anshondo has a wealth of good talent here. Professionals that take their job very professionally, passionately, tenaciously, aggressively, and with a lot of love. Every time I see graduates day in and day out, it's always great when they come up and say, Judge, thank you. Just thank you. Two words. Not three words, Judge. Two words. Thank you. Because they're doing well. They're functioning. They're productive. They restored their lives, the lives of their families. It's beautiful. It's great. And I want to thank the judges for when they refer their cases because we work them hard, and they know that it's true, that I email my team at 3:30 in the morning. They're absolutely correct. Seven to seven. We work hard. Because you know what? It's demanding. It's demanding that we work that hard. You know, when you get this saying by Judge Lombardi, I mean Judge Lombardi, he was the judge. Vince Lombardi for the Packers one time said, when he was taking over the Packers, he says, gentlemen, you haven't had a winning season since I don't know when. I think you all have won one game in the last three years. We're going to change that. We're going to change that, and we're going to go back to fundamentals. We're going to start with family values. We're going to start with morals. And I'm going to tell you one thing. Here's three things. Now I'm going to do the three things, Judge. Said, there's God, there's family, and then there's the Packers. That's the way we treat them. Large Star says, you know what? That guy was crazy when I heard him on an interview. Says, you know what? This guy came in, and he told us, you know what? We may not be perfect, but we're going to chase perfection. So I've been chasing it because we need to be perfect in what we do. You know, alcohol is a very devastating disease. It's prevalent here in our community. And it's the leading, third-leading cause of the problems that we have in our communities because it's a legal drug. I deal with a legal drug. This team deals with a legal drug. And it's hard to chase and change behavior, but we take very much interest in doing that because we have to follow guiding principles, best practices. We have to apply all of those fundamentals that are very important in what we do. I wanted to share a few things because what this devastating disease is doing is the following. You know, we've recognized that alcohol is the third-leading lifestyle-related cause of death after tobacco and poor diet and exercise. And excessive use costs 3-point million years of potential life annually, and we must face that reality head-on. Approximately 8% of drivers in the United States test positive for alcohol on weekend evenings. 2% have blood or breath alcohol concentrations exceeding the legal limit in most states. 15% test positive for illicit drugs. 7% test positive for prescription medications that are likely to impair skills or driving skills. The risk of having a car crash increases exponentially with increasing alcohol levels five times greater for drivers exceeding the legal alcohol limit. More than 1/3 of fatally injured drivers test positive for alcohol, and nearly 1/4 test positive for other intoxicating drugs, most commonly marijuana. Now, most persons arrested for DWI do not go to repeat the offense. You know, most of those that we treat are high-risk, high-need. It's a quadrant. Those are the people that we treat. 25% do become repeat offenders. Almost half of repeat DWI offenders have a diagnosable substance use disorder and often a co-occurring psychiatric disorder, including bipolar, manic depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, or other generalized anxiety disorder. We have found that most interventions for repeat DWI offenders have produced mixed or non-significant results. Psychoeducational groups and victim impact panels have no discernible impact on DWI recidivism. Ignition interlocks are only good while they're in use, and effects usually don't last after they are removed. So the only programs demonstrating consistent positive effects combine multiple service components, which include substance use disorder, treatment, intensive court and community supervision, monitoring technology such as interlocks and driver's license restrictions. DWI courts were created to provide intensive supervision of repeat DWI offenders and improve their compliance with substance use, disorder treatment, and monitoring devices. Modeled after drug courts, DWI courts require participants to attend frequent status hearings in court, complete an intensive regimen of substance use disorder treatment, and other indicated services, and undergo random or continuous biological testing for alcohol and other drugs. You know, for some of you who do not know this world of what DWI courts, they're post-adjudication, post-sentencing. Usually, these judges administer and render a judge- post-sentencing. Usually, these judges administer and render a judgment. They then will refer them after a screening process, a screening with the program to find out if they're gonna be coming into the program. A very intense way of bringing in people into the program. Now, for our commissioners, our county judge, these are the facts. These programs do work. They do save lives. You know, when you don't have people incarcerating, we're saving approximately $75 a day for those folks. By far, these courts have produced a 200% financial return on investment, so clearly the outcomes dictate that for every person that graduates, their health and living increases. They become employed and lessen the unemployment rates. Family dynamics become functional, and families recover as well. More so, alcohol causes 46% of lost workplace productivity due to alcohol impairment. Healthcare expenses are reduced in hospitalization and ER visits. Treatment of dependence, abuse declines, and support systems are ongoing to help reduce relapse. Law enforcement expenses drop, and impaired driving costs are impacted when targeting the repeat offender with treatment, regimen, and structure. You know, the Surgeon General of the United States just issued his report, very lengthy report. And he indicates that we have a serious substance misuse problem in this country. It's very devastating to this country. In 2015, 66.7 million people in the United States reported binge drinking in the past month. Alcohol misuse contributes to 88,000 deaths in the United States each year. One in 10 deaths among working adults are due to alcohol misuse. Our life expectancy ranks 27th among nations, even though we spend more than any other country on healthcare. Therefore, we take our responsibility seriously, passionately, and with aggressiveness to help each and every individual and their families to regain hope and salvation, to be responsible and productive citizens, and to help our communities be safe. So, I applaud this team. If we can give them a round of applause. In performing our duties, we also include representatives from the court, treatment programs, community supervision, the defense bar, prosecution and law enforcement on the team, who regularly meet in staff meetings and status hearings. Our outcome measures are greater because our team has been together for such a long time, and I want to congratulate this team for being with me such a long time. But because you have those people that are with you for such a long time, the research indicates, because we get to know these individuals and we work together, even though we disagree sometimes, which is good, it's healthy. We get to produce and get into those people's lives and their families and make those changes that are necessary. So, we know how to tick. We click. We connect. And we do things right. So, I could be here, but I must not be remiss in saying that Mr. Montoya has failed to tell you the following. It is true, I didn't give up on Mr. Montoya, as I don't with many. But what he's failed to tell you is that he also has his own business. It's a car wash business. He started his own business with his family now. He's also now become the president of the nonprofit organization, which is the 501(c)(3) that funds and does the fundraising for our program. So, he's failed to tell you those things. He's also failed to tell you that now we go around the state speaking about recovery and about these programs and about what he does. So, he's failed to tell you a few things like being invited to Washington now to go and speak about recovery. But that's Mr. Montoya. And that's the other 400 people that have gone to our program that are doing well as they are here. And what that tells me is because we came into their lives, that's the potential they have. That's really who they are. And that's why these judges, they take their time and effort to be able to place these individuals, for them to recognize their problem, and we do the work so that we make them proud of their decision for restoring a life. So, let's give our judiciary a round of applause as well. So, it gives me not only a great honor to celebrate this wonderful event with you because it's great for El Paso. It's great. That means that that's the kind of work we do down here. We'll still take you to Mexico. Don't worry. It's safe. Took him to LNJ last night. He enjoyed the food there. You know, folks, when you collaborate with a lot of good people, it's a great celebration. Really is. To the rest of my court staff, if you'll please stand because they also help indirectly. So, Debbie, Lori, Gina, please stand up. Mr. Mike Stevens, our bailiff, thank you so much. For all of you, I celebrate this event with you because it is El Paso. I want to thank you for taking the time to, to celebrate with us this wonderful recognition. We hope to continue our hard work representing you, our community, not only in here locally, statewide. You know, when me and Maggie went to Ecuador to represent El Paso to, to help them start a program, it was gonna be very difficult for Ecuador to do this, only because some of their narcotics are legal, and so it's tough to legalize. But you know what? Here, look, we have alcohol. It's legal. We went to Mexico. Now, they've adopted this model. So, it's just part of that criminal justice reform that we, the third branch of government, are taking our part. And when these teams really work together collectively, boy, we do make a difference. And I'm really glad that we do make a difference. And we're gonna continue to chase that perfection, to be as good as we can be. I'm gonna try to measure up to that little bit that we're missing, Jim, so that El Paso continues to celebrate with you, and we get to celebrate the people that have resurrected. They're like butterflies now. They've come out of their cocoon. They've lost that impairment, and they've lost that ugly stuff and ugly lifestyle they were having and celebrating with you so that we can celebrate all together and make our, our public, our community, and our roads safe. So, estimado colega, thank you so much for that as well.
Before we end the ceremony, I'd like to recognize, I'm breaking in some new contact lenses, so if I didn't see you, it's because it's the contact lenses. But I saw Judge Bill Moody here. I saw Judge Sam Medrano here, Judge Diana Varete, Judge Delia Biones, county clerk, Justice of the Peace from Precinct Number Five, Chapman. And if, like I said, if I missed you, I'm sorry. But I wanted to present a very special award that was designed by Judge David Guadama. And I'd like to read it, and it says, "This is for the Specialty Court Hall of Fame, the Avantastas Award, presented to Judge Robert Anshondo, the Champion DWI Court Judge of the County Criminal Court at Law Number Two, in appreciation of his tenacity, pursuit of excellence, and dedication to serving persons with substance use disorders in El Paso County, Texas, presented this third day of May 2017 by the grateful participants and alumni of the DWI Intervention and Treatment Program and those who love them. Congratulations."
I haven't heard Avantastas since I caught a pass at Jeff. I think my brother Danny said, "¿Te crees muy chingo?" Folks, if I can bear just a little bit of your time, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Maggie to close it up. And first of all, thank you, Maggie, for doing a wonderful job being and running the show this morning. I again want to extend my appreciation to the court, your honor, commissioners. Thank you so much for your support. Without your support, coming to you, especially at budget time, I know it's tough and it's tight, and I want to tell you that we try to work with what we have, and that's what makes a great team. They extend themselves. They make it work with what we have. So, thank you so much. And our providers, our providers that provide us all the technology to help these individuals restore their lives. Thank you all so much for being here, each and every one of you for helping us make a difference. What this court wanted to do is recognize some of our team members that have been with us for quite some time. So, I wanted to present to them also, I'll take them as they come up here. So, if I call your name, you'll please join me. And let's recognize them as soon as I finish with everyone. To VNA Rosales, come on up. VNA is our, our treatment provider in the program. She's been with me now six years, she says. I think it's seven. Thank you so much. Mr. Manny Solis, community supervision. Manny does a lot of our community supervision, make sure that he follows the, not only the guiding principles, but they follow the rules as well. So, thank you so much. And Ms. Linda Potts. Take a picture, Ms. Potts. She doesn't like to take pictures, but now she's on the front row. So, thank you, Linda. She's also our community supervision officer. Thank you for all the help you give the court as well. Appreciate it. Ivan Martinez, our DA. Ivan is our gatekeeper. He makes sure that he gets together with his colleagues from other courts for those who want to come into the programs who kind of clears the hurdles for us. So, Ivan, thank you so much on behalf of our court for all your work that you do. Officer Juan Farrell from the El Paso Police Department. Ever since we started this program, Chief Allen, I know he took over from you, my chief, always Commissioner Leon, when they were involved in the drug court movement, Chief Allen said immediately, "We're gonna help you, Judge." So, thanks for, Chief Allen, for that, and for the representatives over here from the El Paso Police Department. I know our participants don't miss the officers knocking on the doors. Officer, thank you so much for what you do. Julio Gonzalez from the El Paso County Sheriff's Department. Julio is one of those that at 1:00 in the morning, he's calling me. "Something's happening, Judge. Do we take him in or not?" We have a discussion before we make that decision. You know, let me just say two things about law enforcement. El Paso is visionary. Judge Guadama, you brought this. Not too many teams have law enforcement. Law enforcement is a key component in, in what we do. Because not only do these individuals get to go to their homes, they get to talk to their families, find out if they're embracing this program, and report to us. Not only do they do the surveillance, they take the photographs that we need to find out if they're really making changes. I will tell you that these guys don't take too much break. You know, sometimes we have days off and these guys don't. And so, I appreciate their hard work that they do because sometimes they have to deal with some very difficult people. We've got a lot of people that are very bad. Give you an example. We had a vet before we had Vet Court. Judge Farrell, thank you for taking over that. He was a sniper that could probably shoot a dime, probably, I don't know, 300, 400 feet. They go to the house one time. That particular individual went through a moment in his Vietnam era, and he came out and threw himself into the bushes, which caused these guys to probably drop. And he had a broomstick, and he pointed it like if he had a rifle. And that was a very close call. And these are the serious individuals that we have to deal with. And so, their lives, you know, at times, it becomes very difficult. So, you know, gentlemen, thank you so much for what you do. I don't think she expected this, but this goes to Letitia Medina. Let me just read. I will tell you that at the time that Lori got pregnant one time with her twins, what is it, 11 years ago? Is it 13 years ago? Yeah. Well, she had to take a leave of absence. Leti comes over from Court Administration, fills in the spot. That's when I went into her door, talked about drug courts with Judge Guadama. I said, "You know, I'd take a shot at this title." And so, Leti decided that, well, she was offered the position. She already was vested over there with the county administration. So, it took her a lot to say, "Okay, Judge, I'll take a chance." And I told her, "I don't know if it will exist next year." And so, 13 years later. So, you better thank Lori. Let me just read this. "No words can express the level of your commitment and dedication to your work and tireless energy to complete the task with satisfaction. Your high-quality service as well as your contributions to the DWI Drug Court program are greatly valued and well-respected. Congratulations on 13 years." Bueno, I guess que me avienté. And I think at this time, we're gonna leave it in your hands. Again, folks, on behalf of myself, this team, my staff, my wife who puts up with me, my daughter who's here, thank you all so much for celebrating this with you. Thank you so much.
And we close. Thank you very much for attending. There's a small reception outside for your enjoyment. Thank you.
Caesar, we're adjourned.
This concludes today's meeting at 11:18 a.m.